Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The public hearing by the chairperson of the subcommittee to review the proposed rules and regulations on the Wakine KC Conception Compassionate Cannabis Use Act of 2013 is now called to order. I'd like to thank everybody for joining us this evening, more importantly so, before we continue with anything else. I'd like to just take the time to extend my thank you to the Dedito Mayor, Mayor Savaris, and Vice Mayor Peter Beneventi for giving me, for giving this subcommittee the opportunity to vote a public hearing here in the Senior Citizen Center here in Dedito. I will tell you that the subcommittee is a subcommittee by the Committee on Health, Economic Development, Homeland Security, and Senior Citizens. For the record, it is now 6:03, and in accordance with Chapter 5 GCA, Chapter 8, subsection 8107, I want to say notices were sent out via email to all the senators and to all the main media broadcasting outlets on Tuesday, May 17, which adheres to the five-day notice, and the second notice was sent out on Friday, May 20, 2016, which adheres to the 48-hour notice. Ladies and gentlemen, public hearings are the most essential part of our legislative responsibilities, and I want to make sure that we've done all we can to hear as much of the community as possible. This evening, ladies and gentlemen, I'm proud to be out in Dedito, bringing you the opportunity to share your thoughts and concerns regarding the rules and regulations governing the medicinal cannabis program for our island of Guam. It's been a long time coming, but I'm certain that the members of the team, from my office to the good team, the great team at Public Health, and the legal minds of the Attorney General's office, they wanted to make sure that we built this program right from the beginning, and we have committed to making the medicinal marijuana program safe, accessible, and affordable. Ladies and gentlemen, I want to say that this hasn't been an easy process, but we're making headway. Communities throughout the nation have been experiencing many of the same hiccups we are now, but they have built programs that suit their populations, and with your help, I know that Guam can do the same. The rules and regulations before us today have been drafted by the team at the Department of Public Health and Social Services, and they've been reviewed and approved by the Office of the Attorney General. I want to let you guys know, ladies and gentlemen, that I know that there are many other concerns regarding medicinal cannabis and the processes by which we might employ this program here on Guam. However, I ask that the testimony shared tonight on the record remain focused as possible on the rules and regulations before us today. If you have any concern about these rules and how they will affect patient care, if you have any issue with the fees prescribed within, or if you would like to share your ideas on the regulations set on how we can revisit them so that they better serve the safety and the well-being of our community, this is your platform. This is your microphone. Tonight's discussion represents the open door of collaboration, and I know we have many kinks to iron out before moving forward. Maybe say many kinks to iron out moving forward, but this is the next step in the processes prescribed by our government, and I'm extremely grateful for your patience, your concern, and your participation in this effort to serve our people and improve the way we care for the sick and those who need us most. And with that, I welcome all of you tonight, and again, I must thank our Dedito Mayor, Melissa Savaris, and all the management and staff who helped us bring this public hearing to you. I'd also like to acknowledge the presence this evening. I see that one of the members from the Dedito Municipal Planning Council is here, and I want to address him, Chief Joe S. Nicholas, but I also know that municipal planning council member also, Saina Ernie Wistic, is also here. Sijous Massey for taking the time to come out from your village to hear what our people of Guam have to say about this. So, Sijous Massey, Tatlu. In addition, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to note for the record, just in case you know of family and friends and other folks who would like to hear more about this and engage in this participation, in addition to tonight's public hearing, there will be three more opportunities to speak on this matter. So tonight, it is here, on Thursday, May 26, 2016, at 6:00 PM, we will be in central Guam at the Sinahanya Mayor's Office. I think it will be at the Senior Citizens Center at the Sinahanya Mayor's Office. And then next Tuesday, on May 31st, at 6:00 PM, the same time, we will be taking our public hearing schedule down to the south, to the Santa Rita Mayor's Office, and that would be at the Santa Rita Senior Citizens Center there. Again, I want to thank all the mayors who stepped up to the plate to open their centers, their village centers, to have this public hearing so that the community can engage. And then, ladies and gentlemen, on the last one, which is on June 7, but before I tell you where the June 7 hearing is, again, Dedito Mayor Savaris, Sinahanya Mayor Robert Hoffman, and his Vice Mayor, Moody Yarati, Dedito Vice Mayor Peter Beneventi, and Mayor Dan Del Alvarez, once calls were made to have the opportunity to bring these public hearings out to the villages, they stepped up to the plate and made it possible for that to come in literally very short notice. Ladies and gentlemen, on the last public hearing, which is, instead of having three, we're going to have four, it will be Tuesday, June 7, we will have that public hearing at the Guam Legislative Public Hearing Room, and these meetings again will all be at 6:00 PM. So if you have any family, friends, neighbors, coworkers that you know are interested in the medicinal cannabis program, please pass the word on. Everyone's input is very, very important, and I want every voice to be heard on this matter. And if you or your family can't make it on the above dates, I want to tell each and every one of you that written testimonies may be submitted to the Office of Senator Tina Munya Barnes, 155 Hesper Place, Hagatna, Guam, 96910. You can send it the old-fashioned way via fax immediately. A lot of us still have faxes. Our number is 472-3400, and/or my email, and that's senator@tina munya barnes.com. If anyone needs any further questions or has any further concerns, you can call my office at 472-345-566. You can speak to anybody in my office. My Chief of Staff is Milia Kwaji. My Office Manager is Janine Cordero. Designee representing the research and the write-up on this is Alan Zapata and Natalie Canata. They are the faces. I want to put names and faces together from our office. I also want to thank the staff of the Legislature for being here, operations to get this recorded, and my staff from Central and our office to make this possible today. Tina, Vince, and Joe, thank you very much. Karina, thank you. Before we open the floor tonight, I'd like to ask once again that we focus on the rules and regulations only. I also ask that we give all those shared testimonies this evening, I'd like to ask that we give them the utmost respect. We know that differing opinions may arise this evening and at all the public hearings that will be scheduled, but everyone will be heard. Also, if you're reading your testimony this evening, please help our committee, assist the committee in the transcription process, and provide your written copy with one of my staff members who are to your right and to your left. We'd like to report these hearings out very quickly and as possible. We do have a deadline to report to the Oversight Chair on Health, Senator Dennis Rodriguez, and that deadline is June 12. So again, on the record, Sijous Massey, I will open that floor. I do have written names who signed up, folks who signed up to speak tonight, and also those who came here in support of, and I'll go ahead. I have one, two, three, four, five chairs up here, and I'd like to call them out. I have Ms. Lynn Wolf, please join us. I have Mr. Ernie Wistic. Are you here to send oral testimony or just here to support? Mr. Wistic? Just support? We do have Mr. Ed Santos, if he'd like to join us up here. Andrea Palacani, you're more than welcome to join us up here. And then also for support, we have Janine Sablon, that's just for support. We have Douglas Brasilio, Brasilio? I hope I'm saying that right. Is it Brasilio or Brasilio? And we have Joseph S. Nicholas, who's here in support. Again, thank you, MPC members, for joining us this evening. We also have some Dedito village residents who are here. I see Mrs. Zuggan in the back. Thank you for joining us. I see a lot of new faces here. Thank you for taking the opportunity. I really miss, ladies and gentlemen, if I didn't recognize the family that helped make this happen, and I just saw their faces here tonight. To the Concepcion family, Mrs. Emily Concepcion, to the siblings of Casey, thank you for being here this evening and continuing this journey on behalf of the patients who truly need this alternative to work with. So, Sijous Massey for being here. I'd also like to thank the Majority Leader, Committee Chair on Rules. Thank you, Senator Respejil, for taking the time of joining me this evening. And before we start, would you like to say something?
I'd just be quick, because I know that Senator Barnes is chairperson of the subcommittee that Senator Rodriguez named to deal with the medical marijuana initiative. I know that this is the first of a series of public hearings that she would be having, and I also know that she's particularly committed, as we are in the Legislature, to make sure that the people's mandate to provide for medical cannabis to be available for those who truly need it, this is a reality that's going to happen, and it's going to happen real soon, and I want to ask that you give Senator Barnes a big round of applause to give her the time. I know that Senator Barnes and I, and we have never made this issue about us, we've made this issue about those who truly need it. In 2010, I introduced a bill to provide for medical marijuana, and Senator Barnes sponsored that bill. It was before its time, and 2010 is well before its time, and despite the criticisms, we are still moving forward, and we're moving forward because this is something that's happening throughout the nation, that not only are they going towards medical marijuana, but also recreation. But the goal of this exercise is to get the feedback from all of you, to make sure that people really have access to this, and that it's about the people who need it, and it's not about creating a new industry for a select few, and that's this chairperson's commitment, and that's my commitment as well. So, thank you, and I look forward to hearing what you have to say. Despite all the things that are happening on our island with PATA and with FASPA and with APIL, we're all here, and I look forward to the things that you have to say tonight. Thank you, Senator Barnes, for the opportunity to give remarks.
Sijous Massey, Majority Leader, Senator Respejil. With that being said, ladies and gentlemen, Ms. Lynn Wolf, please proceed. The mics are there, and you can just take it. I'm going to ask you, because everything's being recorded and televised, it is not a live broadcast, it's pre-recorded, and it will go on the legislative channel, so I'd ask that you speak into the mic and just hold back a tad if you hear some feedback so that we can try and make sure that we listen to everything that you're saying. So, thank you very much. Please proceed.
Senator Barnes and Calley, I want to thank you today for the opportunity to speak, and my name is Lynn Wolf. I'm here to make a very short statement about my concerns regarding the legislation that is currently under review for the use and distribution of medical cannabis on Guam. My opinions have been formed through personal experience and observations as a health care worker with more than 30 years of experience. I have cared for elderly family members with various medical conditions, and I witness on a daily basis patients that would greatly benefit from medical cannabis as an alternative to traditional treatments and pharmaceuticals. The first issue that I feel needs to be reviewed is the list of acceptable conditions that would qualify a patient to participate in the medical cannabis program. The listed conditions in the current legislation do not begin to cover the wide range of diseases that can cause symptoms such as chronic pain, eating disorders, mental health issues, and disabilities. The decision to prescribe medical cannabis, just as any other medication, should be made by a patient's physician based on the needs of that individual patient. There are no review boards or registry programs for any other type of prescribed medications or treatments, and that includes narcotics, which we all know is reaching epidemic levels not only in the United States but throughout the world. Commonly prescribed medications for many conditions and diseases can be addictive, and they have a long list of potential side effects. Many of these side effects can affect a patient's quality of life and can be permanently debilitating. Allowing a well-educated, informed patient the option of using medical cannabis without scrutiny for any reason deemed appropriate by their physician is equivalent to allowing that same physician to prescribe customary pharmaceuticals. The second issue that I feel is important to address is a patient's right to the privacy of their medical records. In 1996, the Health Insurance Privacy and Portability Act was enacted guaranteeing a patient's right to the privacy and confidentiality of medical records. Mandatory surrender of medical records in order to qualify for medical cannabis as an alternative medication is in direct contraindication to the spirit of HIPAA and may unjustly make a patient hesitant to enroll in the medical cannabis program. Releasing medical records to a governmental panel or review board may deny them their right to select a health care plan that they are comfortable with and that they approve of, and that they are following as directed by their physician. In closing, I feel that there's many benefits to the medical cannabis program as an alternative to traditional pharmaceutical therapies. There's a long documented history of effective homeopathic and herbal treatments that spans generations. The key to a successful program in Guam will be effective patient, physician, and public education, along with fair dispensation to all patients that are in need of a natural alternative to pharmaceutical products. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you so very much. Next up, I have Mr. Ernie Wistic.
For the record, my name is Ernest Almazri. I am a full-time farmer, and I have been listening to this from the very beginning. And first of all, foremost, I would like to thank Senator Munya Barnes for all of her effort in getting this thing going and having it passed. Now that it's legal, it's just a time of doing all the rules and regulations. But it makes me wonder, because as being a farmer, cultivation, I want to do this myself and so as many other farmers would like to participate in. I have been hearing, I don't know how true it is, but it seems like they're really going to get a few growers, because all of a sudden, on our island here, there's a lot of farmers that were never farmers before, that can call themselves a farmer, now they're full-time And I think that these full-time farmers are going to take away the opportunity for our local farmers on the island to participate in this because of financial resources. We cannot go to the bank tomorrow morning because we have to do it all on your own. And if we don't have the resources to do this program, then we're out of luck. And it is not fair. You know, one of the testimonies that I had in the past was, "Don't limit the grower, but limit the number of patients." For instance, if there is 1,000 patients, half of these, 100 growers, or 10 growers, and each grower can grow for 100 patients. That way, all of us, I don't have to build 200,000 or 100,000 square foot warehouse. I can build a small warehouse, and I can do it for 100 patients, and so as other farmers like myself who participate in it. But if they want to limit it down, just what I've been hearing, and I don't know how true it is, if they're going to limit it down to three growers, one in the north, one in the south, that is monopoly. That is not right. Because if they, if each farmer can grow for 100 patients, then we don't need to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to put one up to be a grower. I hope that they will take this into consideration and make sure it is not monopolized, and give the other farmers a chance to survive on this island, because as a crop grower, every rainy season is our downside. But if we can participate in this and grow this for our people that are in need, we can still make ends meet if we can participate in this, and we can continue our farming. And it is not going to take away, it's not going to take away any produce on itself out there for our community just because I get to grow medicinal marijuana, because I'm not going to be growing thousands of it, probably 100 plants like in California. Doing 100 plants, I can still grow other crops other than this. So, I would really like to see this get shared among all of our local farmers, or, I don't know whether it is unconstitutional to say that you've got to be at least a farmer, at least 10 years in Guam, not just a farmer last year to be qualified to grow medicinal marijuana. If one of the rules is set that you've got to be at least 10 years really actively growing crops for our community, so if they can make that at least 10 years, then you'll weed out those fly-by-night farmers that want to be farmers or something, and grow medicinal and become, you know, it's all about money. And this bill is not about money. This bill is about helping our people that are in need. So, I'm sure there are others that want to adopt, and I'll kind of limit and listen, and maybe I will attend other meetings. And thank you very much.
Sijous Massey, Mr. Wistic. And again, for the record, just state your name. If you support the rules and regulations, if you have any changes or your post, just state your name for the record, okay? Mr. Santos, I'm sorry.
Hi, Senator Barnes, Senator Respejil. My name is Edward Santos. I'm here as a concerned citizen, but also as a patient. One of my concerns is the lab works that are going to be required for the growers, which I understand safety is paramount to having this go forward and it being successful, which is very understandable. As a grower, and I understand lab works would be required to identify whether there's pesticides in it, pesticides, herbicides, a number of other things that may be detrimental to the consumer. My part is, as a patient that we're able to produce our own medications, would be required to take our own medical cannabis and have it taken to a lab to have it tested. I'm sure, as I do a little farm myself, Mr. Wistic, and I understand I'm not a fly-by-night worker, but I do have tomatoes and other cucumbers and home stuff that I take pride in growing myself. By no means am I a farmer. But I am a person that is ill and has been using medicinal marijuana, but not in the form that we have here available now. I have the generic kind, which is synthetic, and I might get this and I'm given it, use regularly. Unfortunately, I wish I didn't have to, however, it does have some positive effects, and I see this bill to be a positive for the people. And my one concern, Senators, is that fact that individuals that have this medical condition that are able to grow under their own jurisdiction or their own field would have to be required, or will be required, to take their medications to a lab to have it tested, and that's my one concern, Senator, and I think that might be a concern of many, those that are under the same conflict. Thank you for hearing.
You're very welcome, Mr. Santos. Thank you. Ms. Palacani?
Thank you, Senator Barnes, and Senator Respejil, and Mayor Savaris for having us today. My name is Andrea C. Palacani, and I'm the president of Women Grow Guam and a founding member of the organization Grassroots Guam. We are here today to advocate on behalf of the patients and caregivers and 19,692 people who came out in record number to vote for the medical cannabis program for Guam. While I can't speak for everyone, I know that I can speak for the many who have contacted us directly to ask questions and express their concerns. I wrote a letter to Governor Calvo on Friday, May 20, and it was my first attempt at contacting him directly to express the major disappointment that is prevalent in our community right now. I am told of the many frustrations by people who are waiting this program, and they are not happy. But little attention has been paid to the mandate of the people. It was the will of the people that enacted this program, and the voice of the people needs to be heard. But it is our own elected leaders that we have found to be the least willing to hear us, with only the exception of you, Senator Barnes, who has been kind enough to hear our concerns, show up at our meetings, and take our calls, and we thank you for that. Yet the responsibility of putting this program together belonged to the Department of Public Health and Social Services. Yet the responsibility of putting this program together belonged to the Department of Public Health and Social Services, who held three days of hearings, then essentially shut the door on us. Mr. Gillen is quoted on air stating that there is no law binding the department to listen to our concerns. And that may be so, but that cavalier attitude and lack of compassion to hear the needs of the patients has led us to this point. We are left with a dysfunctional program, which is the skeleton of a terrible Arizona MMJ program that was selected purely for financial reasons, with little consideration given to compassion for the patients. Our medical cannabis program was essentially built on a house of cards and that house of cards just collapsed. Mr. Gillen is also stating, has stated that the medical director that he had placed in the roles is only a medical director in name only, completely undermining the very reason to have one and completely undermining the entire program that he built. We implore the legislature to consider the funding, to reconsider the funding allotted to this program from the Healthy Futures Fund, so that Mr. Gillen can stop this nonsense of creating this huge barrier for businesses to enter the cannabis marketplace. The biggest concern from the first draft based on all the written oral testimonies was a thirty-five-thousand-dollar non-refundable registration certificate fee. So they chopped it up into a licensing fee and three permitting fees totaling thirty thousand dollars, thirty thousand dollars, and sent it back to you. We, the people, can do math, and it's the same thing. And the casualties of this game of political hot potato are this program and the patients who are waiting to participate. The same patients who voted for this program and the same patients who get to vote this election. More patients want medical cannabis than they wanted the highest legislative winner, no offense, Senators, but it's the cold hard truth that our elected and appointed officials seem to keep forgetting. So we are thankful for this forum and the opportunity to voice our concerns yet again. We have identified flaws in the final draft rules and also in the statute. And we will be outlining them in the upcoming weeks. We will also be providing a technical testimony as soon as that's completed, which will cite actual sections in the mandate and proposed rules and proposed solutions and language for your consideration. We have compiled these concerns and have identified all to fall within four categories. The right to privacy, safeguards for patients, equal protection for patients under the law, and fair market and best practices. All these key points will provide insight into strengthening a flawed program that currently is neither compassionate nor sustainable. While we understand that DPHSS is coming at this from a regulatory enforcement perspective, every policy should be rooted in the principle of safe patient access. This principle is the cornerstone from which the entire cannabis industry was founded on, including decriminalized tax and regulate programs, also known as adult use programs. The first thing we wanted to talk about today was sustainability. So we have a little economic snapshot that we're going to pass on. We can't look the other way and pretend that there is no illicit market. Competing with the well-established and unregulated industry will be one of the biggest challenges facing the program's sustainability. The UN did a study and published it as the World Drug Report in two thousand and eleven. From this study, Guam is cited as having a consumption rate of eighteen percent, which is third highest in the world per capita. From this number, we have been able to extrapolate and estimate some very important information. And so you can take a look at the little handout that we have there. So we look at the size of the regulated market that is being proposed with the list of conditions. Mr. Gillen was quoted as saying it's a little over five thousand patients. And the current illicit market would be twenty-eight thousand eight hundred potential patients. The program licensing fees, that's thirty thousand to any business who wants to open in the regulated market where the current illicit market has none. The program compliance costs, the proposed regulated market will have compliance costs, including a seven-hundred-fifty-pound safe and a bunch of odds and ends that we would be required to have security system cameras and whatnot. The current illicit market has none. Minimum testing standards for safe patient consumption, there's none in our rules currently. And there's none in the illicit market, so no difference. We did a rough estimate, a very conservative estimate. We believe that medical consumption, the number is a little bit higher. But we went with a range of two and a half to five ounces per person per annum. And in the proposed regulated market, you're talking about four hundred fifty to nine hundred pounds per year. Whereas in the current illicit market, you're talking about twenty-six hundred to fifty-two hundred pounds per year. With an estimated market value at ten thousand per pound, which is the current polling rate, I don't know if you're aware, but when this program was initially proposed, it was estimated to be at eight thousand. So passing this law already has affected the pricing on the black market. So the estimated market value, total market value is four-point-five million to nine million in the regulated market, which is twenty-six million to fifty-two million on the illicit market. So if you're, anybody's wondering, we're probably looking at somewhere of fifty million dollars in an underground economy that is not getting reported, is not being regulated, and it exists. That comes out to potential gross receipts collections of a hundred eighty thousand to three hundred sixty thousand in the regulated market. And the illicit market would be one to two million. And currently, patient private, privacy and confidentiality is not protected in our regulated market. But if you wanted to go on your street corner and pick up a doobie, pretty sure that no one's going to say anything. So I would say there's more privacy on the illicit market right now. And so if you can see, basically putting this side by side, it's pretty much, pretty much telling you that this program is not going to sustain itself. No one's going to buy anything on the regulated market. There's no benefit to do so. Much has been made to discuss and outline rules to prevent diversion of regulated cannabis into the black market. But if you, once again, look at this, she, I don't think that's going to happen. It's going the other way around. So, patients will continue to purchase illicit cannabis because there is no benefit to purchasing it on the regulated market. We all understand and know that possession of under-announced cannabis is a non-classified offense which translates into a speeding ticket. A speeding ticket, most patients will be willing to accept if it means alleviating symptoms from the many conditions with which we are afflicted. This program was built by people who have no idea what happens in the real world. And that's the truth from reading the rules. This ringing is actually the opposite of how we should approach this issue. The question was, and still is, how do we divert illicit consumption into the regulatory framework? And that's the way we need to view this program and how we need to build it. Is taking everything that's on the unregulated market and putting it into the dispensary. So we can ask for identification, so it doesn't as easily get it to the hands seventy grams for a child to put in their hydro flask and take it to school with them to sell to their friends. That is the concern and that is all of our concern. But leaving it in a market that we can't enforce or regulate makes no sense to me. We need to put this into the dispensaries. All of it, or at least as much as we can. They are not two separate things, the black market and the regulated market, and they will both directly affect each other based on pricing that will be controlled by the illicit market, which is the more established and the larger market. It's like your little coffee shop opening up right next to Starbucks and trying to charge more. No one's going to go there. I mean, it's just a basic economic principle. The illicit market will win and this program will fail within a year of the first harvest. And after that, there is no turning back because we will have enabled the illicit market to become more sophisticated in the products that they will be able to deliver and robust, providing patients with what they need better than the regulated market could. With prices through the roof and still no safeguards for patient consumption. So I ask again, how do we divert illicit consumption into the regulatory framework? Our first step is to increase the market size, which is going to require a mandate amendment, an amendment to the statute, Senator. This includes the addition of one condition that needs to be on this list, and I'm with Lynn here on this. It should be any condition your doctor recommends cannabis for medical or therapeutic benefit without the intervention or the prevention from any bureaucrat who may or may not know anything about cannabis and its medical benefits. Our second step is to reduce the fees into a tiered licensing structure to account for a craft grower, just like Mr. Wistick is referring to himself. He may be considered a craft grower, a medium grower in a large-scale commercial operation, so that not all farmers are paying thirty thousand dollars or whatever the fees may end up being. And we will post language of parameters for that at another hearing. We also have another flyer, which we're going to talk a little bit about the key points that we're going to outline in the next few hearings. So for the next, the next two hearings, we're going to outline four key points in detail, which is the right to privacy, medical cannabis safeguards, competitive fair market and best practices, and equal protection under the law. So if you want to just touch a little on it, kind of, we just kind of put it all in a nutshell. According to the proposed rules and regulations, a doctor must indicate your condition to public health before you qualify for the program. They may ask you for your medical records, and if you deny the request, you may be denied a patient registry card. Your health records should be safeguarded, and doctors are bound by oath to doctor-patient confidentiality. At the risk of losing their license by violating this oath, doctors will probably be concerned about participating in this program if they are required to do something like that. Our solution? Patient registry cards should be optional. Patients are allowed better protection with the card or would like to travel to a state that has medical cannabis reciprocity, they may opt to have a registry card. But we shouldn't be required to give up our Fifth Amendment right and be forced to sign up for cannabis program, basically putting my name on a document that says I'm going to consume a federally controlled Schedule One substance. That should be my option if I want to write my name on a line that says I'm going to do that or not. All that should be required, if there is a registry card program, if I want to go in and get one, all that should be required is a valid photo ID, a doctor's recommendation. And that recommendation should simply state that you have a condition that qualifies you for the program and not indicate what condition that is. A doctor's recommendation should suffice its protection from law enforcement and should be kept on you at all times when you are purchasing or in possession of medical cannabis. With regards to medical cannabis safeguards, our final draft rules did not outline any minimum safeguards for diagnostics or laboratory testing. What does this mean? There is no requirement to check for mold, pesticides, or volatile compounds. Nor is there any minimum requirement for cannabinoid or terpenoid profiles. This means that you could be purchasing a product that has not been properly sampled and verified. Patients could be consuming unacceptable levels of harmful toxins. This also means that dispensaries will be purchasing cannabis that hasn't, that isn't verified. Yet the rules state that dispensaries are responsible for what they sell, and the rules and regulations are requiring to put a disclaimer, basically saying the government is not responsible for what you're buying. And then also, there is a section in the rules that says medical dispensaries are responsible for that. With all this and no requirements and no testing, and I'm going to buy from a grower and I'm a dispenser, I'm not going to buy from anybody. I'm not going to buy from anybody that, I mean, that cannot, that has not been verified. Mold, mildew, how long have they been storing it? What's in it? What strain is it? Can I even verify that? We don't think this promotes a healthy framework for the industry. The only way to resolve this is to include a diagnostic component that defines a scientific sampling method, an acceptable level of toxins and hazardous materials with a minimum requirement for listed cannabinoids and terpene content. There's a book, and I've said this numerous times, and I can't see how, Department of Public Health and Social Services does not have a copy of this book, but it's the American Herbal Pharmacopeia monograph. And in this book, it's five hundred-plus pages long. I am not a diagnostician. I have not read it. I have not seen it, nor do I possess it. But I'd imagine that public health would have a copy of this book or have access to, and still did not feel that putting any sort of diagnostic standards was important to this program. Once again, going back to the cavalier attitude, what we're left with is the skeleton of a program. Now, the last thing we wanted to cover was equal protection under the law. You know, going back to the list of conditions, and I understand why that list of conditions was put together because it needed to pass the legislature to be able to get into the hands of the people. But the spirit of the law is that all people are protected under it equally. And under this statute, a patient with diabetes is not covered the same as a patient with cancer. A patient with eczema, psoriasis, asthma, fibromyalgia, we can go on and on and on and on and on. None of these patients are covered with the same protections as cancer. HIV, epilepsy, PTSD. Someone with bipolar disorder, someone with severe depression, anxiety. None of these patients are covered. They may lose their jobs. They may be arrested for possessing cannabis. And it isn't until they get their day in court that, okay, you know what, you showed that you needed medical cannabis, so we're going to give you an affirmative defense. That didn't protect me from my loss of wages, didn't protect my family from shame, stigma put upon me for being arrested. And at the end of the day, Senator, we think that's unfair. And we hope that you will consider an amendment to the statute that will include all patients if their doctor recommends medical cannabis for them. That is our testimony. So we, again, thank you, Senator Barnes and Senator Rispisho and Mayor Savaros for hosting us. Thank you to the subcommittee for hearing our concerns, and thank you to everyone that showed up to support Women Grow, Grassroots Guam, and the rest of our community who can't be here with us today.
Thank you, Ms. Pillecani. I do see that there are more folks in the room. Based on what I have, for those who signed up, if there's no one else that wants to come up and say something, we are going to publicly adjourn this public hearing. And I have a gentleman here. If you'd like to say, Senator Rispisho has a question. I will go ahead and yield to Senator Rispisho at the time, I mean, at this moment?
Just very quickly, thank you, Senator Barnes, and thank you, the three of you, for your participation tonight. I started listening with much interest and I want to generate some discussion regarding the competitive fair market and best practices, and you're saying that in order to convert the illicit market into this regulated cultivation and so that medical marijuana as an industry, medical cannabis as an industry here can be sustainable. But your recommendation is to lower the fees and to ask that the government appropriate more money to regulate this industry. You know, I, one of the things, and I understand that this should always be about the patient, and I think that no matter what fee you charge for someone to set up this medical cannabis, that the cost for that product is going to be the same because it's going to be driven by the competition and by the need. And so from my perspective... And so from my perspective, I think instead of lowering the fees, I think we have an opportunity to increase the fees. And I know that when thirty-five thousand dollars per license was first talked about, there was pushback. And I was thinking more along the lines of two million dollars per license. This is a huge industry and this is an opportunity for our people to reap the benefits from this. Like cost of doing business for this kind of business. And that, and that you require that the money be paid upfront. And then you earmark fifty percent to Guam Memorial Hospital, one-fourth of that to Public Health to regulate and to run the program, and one-fourth of that to GPD. So in my mind, I was thinking that we have a huge opportunity as a community. And no matter what the, we set as a cost for the license, the, the cost to purchase that product is going to be the same. It's not going to, they're not going to make it so expensive where that the patient could not afford it. And so I'd like to generate some more discussion and your thinking that thirty-five thousand is too high. I'm thinking thirty-five thousand is way too low. And if you set these very high standards, you would, you would get people that would be interested in doing this so that it could be sustainable. So that the product can be regulated and so that the industry can be controlled. And also, you know, I, I'm following what's happening throughout the nation. And believe it or not, when some communities have converted from medical marijuana to recreation. The cost of that license under recreational program has increased tenfold. And so people, you know, you can, I know the chair of the subcommittee is pushing for home cultivation because that's what the community is pushing for. But even with home cultivation, and even if you have a grower, a commercial kind of grower. And people can grow tobacco, but they don't grow tobacco, they buy cigarettes in stores. So if you, you know, you can, you can accommodate those that are able to grow this at their house or those who need it and under doctor's prescription to do it. But on a more commercialized basis, if someone's going to do this as a commercial business, I think that we should, we should tax them to the point where it's going to be a direct benefit for our community, for Guam Memorial Hospital, for Public Health, for the police department. So I just throw that out there for your consideration, I'm just wondering why we want to lower the fees when we have an opportunity to even. I think five million is too high per license, but I think if you do two million per license, people would buy the license and you would see a kind of operation that they're going to want to make sure that this thing is sustainable.
Senator, if I may, address your comments. Seventy-five percent of the cannabis industry is pretty much driven by small businesses. You're talking about, you know, bakers and people who make lotions and, and that type of thing. And, and then you're also talking about something that we don't, I, two million, five billion dollars. Okay, coming up with the fee before we even know what the size of the market is at five thousand patients. At, at the current rate, it's sixty thousand in licensing fees where I, I, I'd like to say that that would be wrong. I'm a small business owner and if, when we put together the cost that we are going to sell something or a service. We take all the costs of doing business into consideration before we price that in the market. And so the sixty thousand in dollars, sixty thousand in dollars, sixty thousand dollars in fees. From the cultivator's fees to the dispensary fees. By the time it gets to the patients, that's already sixty thousand in government fees that they're, they're, they're having to shoulder the cost for. And, and, and you know, you may have a lotion. There, there are businesses that are already existing, Crown Bakery, Small Bakers. That may want to package a, a form of edible and may need less than one thousand square feet to grow a, a particular strain just for that edible. They're not going to be able to afford two million dollars and so they're not going to enter the marketplace. We just think that high fees is a barrier, it, it's a deterrent for businesses to participate.
I know, but by your own admission, in the illicit market, there's as much as fifty-two million dollars that could be generated on an illicit market. So you're talking about a lot of money in our community.
Oh, I.
For the, for this particular product.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I feel that two million dollars is quite excessive and I think that a fee that high would encourage or invite investors from off-island. Or outside, or conglomerates, or corporations to come in and take over the whole industry on the island, which would not benefit the tax revenue or, or anyone here.
Okay, I'm going to give Mr. Wistic a minute or so to go ahead and comment on that. But I want to share again, ladies and gentlemen, that the intent was to go ahead and receive a testimony and then at the hearing on June seventh. Just based on everything that is coming in, if there's any other added consideration or suggestion to be made or corner to what is being presented. Then, then they could support those efforts then, only because I wanted to give the opportunity for everybody who comes here on the different north, central, and south. To be given the opportunity to speak and not debate. And I, and I can understand that, that concept going through and it's really, really good. But just because of giving the consideration for those who spoke. Mr. Wistic, I will give you one, go ahead and say a point, and then I do have two more people that, that, that want to come up and speak.
Yeah, I think two million dollars is pretty. I want to go back, you know, for many years, even before you were born, Senator. Our big farmers here in Guam have been talking about building a slaughterhouse. And then. When it started rolling, everybody started talking about, you know, making pork chops, making bacon. And this thing, this marijuana deal, medicine, it reminds me of that. Now we're talking about making millions of dollars. And we're not giving our, our local people the opportunity, especially the people that are in need of this medicinal marijuana. You know, we should give these people a chance. You're saying that people still buy their cigarette although the price goes up and they're not growing it and they can grow it. Believe me, if you allow our patients that can still grow this stuff. Especially if they're only going to go forward if that's the limit. You know, they, they, they don't have to go and buy this medicinal for three hundred dollars an ounce or whatever. They can grow it in their backyard, somewhere in their garage for their own use. There is nothing wrong with that. Now that we're talking about this medicinal, now we're talking about a sustainable of getting rich. It's all wrong because when this thing, when this bill was started, it was for the conception. And people like the conception. It's not about the industry, it's, it's about taking care of our people. So we need to stop talking about making millions of dollars. Let's, let's allow our farmer, let's allow.
Sorry, no, I, I want to follow the rules of engagement, but whether it's thirty-five thousand or two million, the profit is still going to be made. And then that profit will be taxed, and that's how you have a regulated, controlled industry, I'm not.
I understand, I understand, okay, okay.
So don't say it's not for the people, it's for the people, everything we're doing in this regard is for the consumer, it's for the.
So the public health.
But the field, that money's going to be generated, you're, you're just talking about who is going to profit. And if you put a two million dollar amount for the license, let that person take that risk. And then you also want to have a cottage industry category, I mean, there's a way to tier it, but I'm just saying if, if this had, thing happens and the license is so little. And the amount of money it generates per annum is fifty million dollars. You would come back to us and say that we just practically gave this thing away. We just gave it away.
What, what if we allow our patient to grow the priority, beg, beg our patient?
Yeah, I, I think Mr. Wistic, you're talking about a, a portion of the provision that was in the original intent of Bill two one five. And that was home cultivation and something that I, as an author of the original legislation, is still considering. Again, I said when we did the rules of engagement, we were going to take, yeah, no worries. And I think it's, it's very healthy because we have an opportunity at the next several hearings to hear more. Of what the community wants from the different, from the different sections of the island. So with that being said, I, I'm really hoping that those who can make it to the other hearings, that they take the opportunity to come. Based on what they've heard today, if there's a solution or recommendation or a, a question based on what my good colleagues spoke about, please don't hesitate. I'm not, I don't want anybody to debate back and forth, I think it's important and this is good that we bring all these suggestions up first. On the final public hearing, which is going to be at the legislative public hearing room. I will bring up all, if there is anyone who brings up any concerns of what was brought up during the previous series. Then I will give some leeway to talk about what was said because I don't want anybody to pick themselves for or against. It was to take testimony from everybody who, who walked into these hearings and give them the fair time and amount to, to share what is on their mind. Okay, so with that being said, I do have Mr. Suswiko who signed in, he might want to say something. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for, I appreciate it.
I just wanted to advise Senator Rispio that it costs a pharmacy two hundred dollars to get a license. And also if you're interested in the fee structure and the taxation, if you could take a look at Washington State's case study. Because they essentially almost killed their own programs by becoming overzealous on their fees and taxation. They ended up having to shut down all their medical dispensaries. So that may be a case study you may be interested to look at.
Good, thank you. If you want to go ahead and also note that for the upcoming ones, that would be good information that the committee can append to the journal. I also have, ladies and gentlemen, if I may, and if you could give some courtesy to make sure that everybody hears what's going on, Mr.? I want to say Franklin Miesl? Please, come on to the table. Thank you again, ladies and gentlemen, for taking the time to, out of your busy schedule to share your testimony. Mr. Suswiko? Please take your name for the record.
My name is Antonio Suswiko. And I have. Yeah. I am presently a co-bishop of Comunion Dugan. Been treating the last two weeks. And yes, now settling down, there were some issues that bothered me. But my testimony here is regarding to something that I wrote. While they were talking about medical marijuana, I pulled over and I decided to write this. So please bear with me. You decide if I'm broke or found. I titled it, Smoking in the Dark, The Weak Pill. I am sixty-five and that's no joke. Been smoking in the dark since nineteen sixty-five. Now there is a bill that is don't stuck on steel. How much longer do I have to wait to heal? Don't you believe my PTSD is real? My mind gets stuck sometimes, anxiety scares me all the time. Pain after pain, I always feel, how much longer will you pass the pill? I do not know about you, my friend. I say let's all get together and bring this to an end. I can grow my own, just tell me when, because I do not want to end up in the pen. To all my friends. To all my friends who took the fight, you can come back home when we win this fight. Right now, I'm, I'm real uptight, maybe until they get this right. Stop pointing the finger, because I can no longer linger. Please, please, pass this bill so I can stop taking the pill. We need this here Guam, I know, because it helps me stay calm. I know you do not care about my faith, because again, you opened me on status quo. I hope we can all agree, so Buster Hungry is only song king. I need this bill to pass real soon. Otherwise, somebody else will be feeding me with a spoon. I'll be sixty-six next week. I know that we are talking about a seed, a plant that this island really need. I hope this bill will soon pass. This I pray for at every mass. In memory of Mr. Rickard Conception, I thank you, sir, for taking the initial action. I wrote a little more, I hope you can bear with me. You've been, you've been waiting at this seat for years, now that it's close, you still have fears. For years and years, I wonder, who is in charge here? No one knows, you have to figure it out, you hear? Wait and watch, that's the game, all involved, you'll be all ashamed. When people play around with people's lives, you never know the direction your plan will arrive. If you are not careful, you're setting up yourself for a very deep dive. Almost all plants start from a seed, they all come in different colors and shapes. Around the world, they call it weed. The time has come for Guam to show its green color. If you need some help, hey, just give me a holler. How can you eat, how can you eat it, drink it, smoke it, if you cannot grow it? You see, what you plant is what you get, all this delay is just messing up my hair, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Suswiko, appreciate it. I think that would be a very good article for our news media to take. And here, thank you for taking the time to write that, sir.
I am representing the OTGs from the islands. And I have friends that are here that I made, you know this center.
Yes.
Since nineteen seventy-one. There are only a few of them, there are some that I met in nineteen seventy-nine in Fiji.
Yes, sir.
Now, they won't even allow me to go and visit them. I've got poo, blanket, they treat me as if I'm like, what, what are you doing here? Security, I don't know what we are afraid of. You know, Tina, every other place that we go, we have individual guides for every country. What each mayor should do, these people are getting hungry and thirsty. Why don't we do it like the old SPG, every mayor sponsors a delegation and we just have one big party with no cops.
Thank you, Mr. Suswiko, I will definitely work with you on that matter as he's talking about. Having access to our participants from the festival of the city cards. Suzil Smasi to Mr. Suswiko, a great basketball legend for our island of Guam. I, I do understand that Mr. Dave Duñez also signed up, he had his name crossed up but wanted to say a few words. Mr. Mason, before I get you up, Mr. Duñez, are you here? Would you like to, please come on up and sit on the table? I go ahead, Mr. Mason, go ahead and proceed, state your name for the record.
For the record, it's, my name is Franklin Mennel. My penmanship is terrible. Thank you, Senator Mini-Barnes and Senator Rispio. The earlier discussion was mostly about business and fees. The pricing is ridiculous for, for patients because how can they pay? If they were too sick to even hold a job? What the funding, where is it going to come from? Somebody's going to just donate money to them to buy marijuana? They so, we're all concerned about a plant. Some of the concerns are off-base, you'll just need a seed and so on. You'll just need a seed and soil. You don't need chemicals, you just need care. Marijuana will take care of yourself if you take care of me. You don't need dispensary. Person with cancer, smoking marijuana doesn't work. Consuming it in the oil form works. There are thirty-four types of cancer it can work. Both you can use it for skin disease, you know, all kinds. I can't list them now, but my concern is why not allow the patients to qualify for medicinal marijuana to grow it themselves? And I know you're here because you're concerned about the same thing. All I heard tonight was more directed towards profit, making money. A patient cannot afford three hundred dollars, maybe not even twenty dollars. Some of the people speaking probably don't even know what... They didn't do the correct research, they don't even smoke marijuana. They don't know much about it, but they know statistics. I too know some statistics. President Nixon put this into law, and he got impeached. University of Virginia was given funding to study if marijuana can be linked to lung cancer, and the result of that study proved opposite. So that study was considered classified, and now we have this... We can't have, use marijuana because it's a drug. So I implore new senators to really push hard for the patients to grow their own marijuana. And if the doctor can help them establish how much cannabis they can use to treat their sickness, that by far is the most... Number one priority. When you make this recreational, then you charge two million dollars. Do you think the tourist industry is at an all-time high? Make it recreational, and it's going to blow up? That's very interesting.
Thank you, Mr. Mason. I will note for the record again that when the official... I mean, the original intent of Bill 15 was introduced, the portion of home cultivation was in those provisions. It wasn't until the legislative debate, the deliberations, when there was a motion made by one of the senators to delete that. And I want you to know that Senator Rispio and I were one of the very few that supported the objection for having the home cultivation provision deleted from the original intent that was deliberated on the floor. That is still very much for consideration. We wanted to make sure that we heard the voices of the people before we looked at the several opportunities that may go forward after the public hearings. So I want you to know, and thank you for coming out and sharing your concern.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Menno. Mr. Duñez?
Thank you, Senator Barnes. Senator Rispio, good evening. And Mr. Menno, I applaud you for that testimony. I believe a lot of what you said, especially for the whole cultivation for the individuals that need the medical marijuana for their health. You know, since the bill was passed approximately two years ago, am I correct?
Almost. This November will make it two years.
Two years, exactly. I've been following in the media since then. To my surprise, two years later, come November, it's still not enacted. We're still basically at square one. I think a lot of the haggling that we're going over about the fees and who's going to benefit from it financially is making the passage of this bill and the intent of it being delayed even more. My concern is that it's going to be delayed much more longer because of this.
Mr. Duñez, I just want to note for the record that if nothing is done based on submission from the Governor's Office and Department of Public Health and Social Service, which is the facilitator, the state agency that is responsible for following the implementation through, if nothing is done before, by August tenth... August tenth, because there's a couple of holidays. Holidays do not count. I know we have one holiday next month, and I think there's one more in July. Three more that occurred. So I think the due date is August tenth. Then the rules and regs as submitted to the legislature will pass, and implementation can start. There is an opportunity, and I do apologize to this August body for not mentioning the several routes that the legislature can take. One, because the rules and regs were submitted to the legislature, the time starts ticking. That due date again, from the submission of May tenth... Am I saying that right, Alan? May tenth was the submission to the Guam Legislature by the Department of Public Health and Social Service, revealed by the AGs and the Governor's Office. That deadline expires on August tenth. Then the rules and regs lapse into law. Two, the legislature could introduce a bill right away and make any changes, go through the public hearing process, and based on what was recommended, we'll go through that process again through the hearings, make, look at the suggestions, make an amendment, and pass it. Third, is they can take the rules and regs, adopt it as an exhibit to another bill, and then work with amending even all that is done today. So those are the possible... Possibilities that this process can go through. The Oversight Chair on Health is Senator Dennis Rodriguez. He has given me the opportunity to help facilitate this through because I was the author with Senator Eileen Yamashita on the original legislative bill 215. Senator Yamashita is not with us. Senator Rispio did support the efforts moving forward. There was one vote that didn't go through, but the process has not stopped. There was a hiccup with the government. The Attorney General's Office was not present when the triple-A process was going on. They weren't called to the table. The Attorney General's Office did ask and ask for time to be able to look at the rules and regs. That time went. They turned it in. They asked for late February, early March. They met their timeline because the extension was afforded, and now we're here. So that's what the process is. The Oversight Chair on Health created a subcommittee, continued to give me the designation to be able to hear the responses from the community. He only asked for three public hearings. Roundtable discussions on these hearings. We're asking for four. We're giving the community four public hearings. Before some of you came in, we noted that the hearing starts tonight. On Thursday, it will be in Sinahanya. On the thirty-first, it will be in Santa Rita, all at six P.M. And then on June seventh, it will be at the legislature. So this is the opportunity that we are giving the community to continue to engage. So that is where it's at. I also asked that when people give their testimony, that they look at the rules and regs as transmitted to the legislature. And the second rules, I mean, the amended rules and regs from the government is now at a hundred and twenty pages. The original bill as passed with the rules and with the amendments intact were a hundred and fifty pages, Alan? A hundred and fifty pages. So we are now at the rules and regs as submitted by the government.
So as I understand you, come August tenth, after all the hearings have been conducted, the legislature will make a ruling?
No, if nothing is done by August tenth, then the rules and regs as currently submitted by the government to the legislature, by the executive branch to the legislative branch, those rules and regs that you have in your head right now will lapse into full process.
That's, I guess, that's probably the main issue. The rules and regs as they stand right now, it doesn't seem to be flying too well. There's a lot of issues, a lot of people concerned about a lot of different parts of it. One of my major concerns is, I know a lot of people that are... That could and will benefit from this law is the price of the final product getting to the patients. If you're not aware of right now on the illegal market for a single marijuana joint cigarette, currently, it has been for years and years and years, twenty dollars a joint. If you don't know that, I'm telling you, it's twenty dollars a joint. If this bill is passed with all these fees and everything associated, and it gets trickled down to the patient, and it's more than that amount of what we're currently, the people that are consuming it illegally right now, more than twenty dollars, and we're defeating the whole purpose. Again, I'm of the opinion, after hearing for the last two years, and it still hasn't happened yet, I'm of the opinion now that this hundred and fifty or a hundred and ten-page document can be reduced to maybe four or five pages if you legalize it, completely decriminalize marijuana. Let the patients grow their own. They're not going to grow something that's going to harm themselves. They're going to make... They don't need no lab to tell them that. If I'm growing it for my mother, I'm not going to put pesticides on it. I'm going to grow it as naturally as I can. And, you know, decriminal... If it's going to take again... I don't believe this August tenth thing is going to fly either. It's probably going to keep going on and on and on. If it does, and it's looking like it's going to do that, do what you need to do, Senator Barnes, and decriminalize marijuana for the sake of the people. Indeed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duñez. Again, as a part of the history, I'd like to share when we first attempted this, I will share the story that when this issue came back to our office, it was a veteran who talked about the utilization of medicinal cannabis. It was a veteran who was suffering from PTSD and was being... Has been receiving the synthetic form of cannabis and other harsh pharmaceuticals, and wanted to... And that synthetic form was Marinol. He could not come out publicly because he was told that as a veteran, if he were to support the efforts and work with the government to see what he could do about the utilization of that, he could lose his veteran benefits. We thought that that was a farce, but we did double-check. We called some of the people in, and that turned out to be a very true statement. When the committee, when we authored this legislation, before we authored Bill 215, we went in resolution form, and we did three possibilities. Again, in the beginning, we looked at full decriminalization because Guam already has a partial decriminalization. If you have less than an ounce of marijuana, it is a citation, and there is a fine, there is a fee. An ounce or over, it becomes a controlled substance violation, a felony. Number two was looking at it for medicinal purposes. And number three was because we weren't winning this war on drugs. What do we do to decriminalize? So recreation. Decriminalization, recreation, and medicinal use. I want to share with you that I did go around some of the villages. I went through the Rotary Clubs, and I also went through the university. I had a couple of presentations, two or three presentations with Dr. Ron McNich and with Dr. Judy Guthridge. I want to share with you that the overwhelming support to introduce legislation was only for medicinal cannabis. When we did not get the votes on the floor, we did a referendum submission by the legislature to give the people the opportunity to vote. And we are here almost two years later, trying to follow through the process. Again, through checks and balances, we continue to try and facilitate. So that's where we're at. The rules and regs have come back to the legislature, and this is the step where we're at. And the committee oversight has asked for three public hearings. We're extending that to the public, to four public hearings. So I ask all of you, please, again, invite your friends, invite your coworkers, invite any of those that you know that is very interested for making sure that this process has access to those that are most needed. Recreational use is not allowed right now. I will be remiss if I didn't share that there is a group of possibly strong-minded women that are looking at the possibility with the Election Commission to look at recreational use. We are not at that step right now. If that goes out, they're going to need... That question was asked. They are going to need to work closely with the Election Commission, probably get a certain percentage of what was done at the last general election of petition signing in order for them to get that on the ballot. The question was brought up at a meeting with Women Grow Guam, and the opportunity was said that if they needed to look further about the possibility of having the island look at recreational use, then what they needed to do is work closely with the Guam Election Commission to see how they can work the referendum. But until then, the medicinal use of cannabis to make sure that our patients have this access is where we're at today. And this August body, the Guam Legislature, has been doing their very best. We just received notice less than two weeks ago. We had to abide by the sunshine law, the public law, to have these notices, public hearings, notice to the public, and we were required for five days. We are at that. So please know that with all the events that are happening around our island, we have not stopped. We continue to try and drive this facilitation forward. If anybody else is interested, I do know that there are a bunch of folks in the community that are looking for other alternatives. So our next meeting will be on Thursday, and that is May twenty-sixth, six P.M. At the Sinahanya Mayor's Office, which holds the Senior Citizen's Office, and it would be in that office, in that center. So if there's no one else who wishes to speak, I want to extend my donkul and Sizos Masi for all of you to take this time. I did not take the... I did take the time to thank the Concepcion family earlier, but I want to also note for the record that those that signed in in support of this effort is Mrs. Emily Concepcion, the spouse of Casey. Thank you very much for being here. Marisha Concepcion, thank you also, family member. There's a Le Lani Pareto, a Jaylen Uggan, a Dennis Flores, and Edgar Flores, who also signed up in support of. I will append all these names who said they're here to support, to see this followed through, through the record. And again, hopefully that we can get more support coming for the meeting in the village of Sinahanya and Santa Rita. And we are in recess. So I will not adjourn the meeting tonight. Thank you, Senator Rispio, for sharing that with me. Thank you very much. It is seven-thirty right now in the evening. This public hearing is officially recessed till May twenty-sixth. Sign him off.